Good evening, everyone. We're bringing this meeting to order here at Weyburn City Council, being held here in council chambers at 6:00 PM Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017. We welcome all the press and the guests in our gallery. We ask anyone who wants to attend these meetings, please feel free to come in full attendance, sit here and view it live within our council chambers. The council chambers are open to all of our citizens of Weyburn and other areas. To start off with, we're going to have the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held May 8th, 2017. Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I'd like to strike off the agenda, item 10D, the development for the permanent for the sidewalk park.
I'll make that a motion, your worship. Can we remove that item?
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. There are no public hearings or notices this day. We have regional communications and delegations. We have the Recreation and Parks Month. We'd like to bring that up.
Do you want one last three before you read it?
Sure. Go ahead. The net will read it to us.
Okay, so the proclamation is for June is Recreation and Parks Month. So I'm going to read the entire proclamation. Whereas in Saskatchewan, we are fortunate enough to have a variety of recreation and parks systems providing countries recreational opportunities for residents and visitors from around the world. Sorry, they just can't hear you. Whereas Recreation, so June is Recreation and Parks Month. Whereas in Saskatchewan, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems providing countless recreation opportunities for residents and visitors from around the world. And whereas Recreation enhances quality of life, active living, and lifelong learning, helps people live happier and longer, develops skills and positive self-image in children and youth, develops creativity and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyles. And whereas Recreation, participation builds family unity and social capital, strengthens volunteer and community development, enhances social interaction, creates community pride and vitality, and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity. And whereas Recreation, therapeutic Recreation and leisure education are essential to the rehabilitation of individuals who have become ill or disabled, or disadvantaged, or who have demonstrated antisocial behavior. And whereas the benefits provided by Recreation and Parks programs and services reduce healthcare and social service costs, serve to boost the economy, economic renewal and sustainability, enhance property values, attract new business, increase tourism, and curb employee absenteeism. And whereas our parks, open spaces, and trails ensure ecological sustainability, provide space to enjoy nature, help maintain clean air and water, and preserve plant and animal wildlife. And whereas all levels of government, the voluntary sector, and private enterprise through the province participate in the planning, development, and operation of Recreation and Parks programs, services, and facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Saskatchewan Parks and Recreation Association does hereby proclaim that June, which witnesses the greening of Saskatchewan and serves as a significant gateway to family activities, has been designated as June is Recreation and Parks Month, which will annually recognize and celebrate the benefits derived year-round from quality public and private recreation and parks resources at the local, regional, and provincial levels.
And with that, I will assign the proclamation. Therefore, the city of Weyburn, in recognition of the benefits and values that Recreation, Parks, and leisure services provide, does hereby designate the month of June as June is Recreation and Parks Month. I sign it here this day. And with that, we probably have the proclamation signed for the Recreation and Parks Month. We now move forward to the reports of council. We have the Facilities Committee. Counselor Van Betje, will you please provide us with that report?
I believe Counselor Wheeler is going to give that report this evening.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Wheeler.
Thanks, your worship. Facility Advisory Committee minutes from May 9th. Previous meeting minutes were adopted and passed. The main talking point of this meeting was leisure facility plan review for the needs of Weyburn in the next 20 to 30 years. The majority of the discussions revolved around joint partnership with the school unit, partnering up to provide a multifaceted recreation facility in our area. The big debate was, how would this look? So after a very long meeting, it was decided that the committee would like the city to approach the school unit and see what kind of arrangements would be made and what the agreement would look like to have a multifaceted complex built in association with the next school to be built. So the motion reads that the Facility Advisory Committee recommends the city council the authorization of an engineered conceptual plan to optimize Jubilee Park as a multi-use, multi-generational facility. And that motion was carried unanimously. This is just a letter to open up the conversation so we could see what something like that may look like if we partnered up with the school again. And that's basically all that involved. There was a lot of discussion whether we wanted a large standalone facility, which would be very costly, or if by partnering up with the school division, we would actually save a lot of money. And with good planning, it would probably be a better fit, in the committee's opinion. So it's up to the council to move forward on that now. That's all, your worship.
And that would mean that that is better termed as a fieldhouse, correct?
That would be correct.
Their school is basically on the books, works for within the next two to three years, correct?
That is correct. If we opened discussions with them now, conceptual plans could be included. So once they understand what the footprint of the school would look like, the facility that the city would be responsible for would have to fit into that. If we choose not to partner up with them, it would be a standalone facility, and we would have to bear the full cost of the entire project.
Mr. Mickle.
Your worship, I have a question. If in fact, we went to the standalone, which would be north of Saskatchewan Drive, or if in fact, we agreed to partner with the school, would the size of the fieldhouse be different at the school or over in our own standalone? Would it be the same size?
If the city was to go with a standalone, they would probably want to include all types of facilities, including ice surface. So the initial phase would just probably be, start off with a fieldhouse, but the conceptual plan would show the additions of these different facilities throughout the requirements of the city. Even if we partnered up with the school division, the first phase of it would probably be solely a fieldhouse, but there are also other needs that need to be addressed, like a new swimming complex. So it's all about just coming up with a good plan to move forward.
That really was, I guess I maybe phrased the question wrong. The question was, is the size of the fieldhouse, if we partner with the school, would be the same size fieldhouse if we built it north of Saskatchewan Drive?
Yes, Counselor Mickle. I believe from the discussions that I've had, if we went with a standalone, it would be a smaller facility than we would end up with the school.
So at the school is a smaller facility?
No. If it was a standalone facility, it would probably be a smaller total facility than what the total footprint would be if we went in with the school.
Thank you. The Parks Board, we'll now move to that. Counselor Chessel.
Thank you, your worship. Parks Board meeting was held Monday, May 8th at lunch hour. We discussed the post office bell monument. The unveiling ceremony will take place on Wednesday, May 17th, from 12:15 to 12:30 in front of City Hall. Spectators will be given some background history on the bell, and Norman and Sandra will be recognized for the donation of the bell, as well as Bob Satter for the design of the structure. We did actually have that last week. It was a pretty good turnout, and I think everyone was happy to see that nice new monument. We also, opportunity road race. Our committee member Glenn Rogers was absent. Some really new updates, besides the race is being held Sunday, June 18th, and the opening ceremonies are at 7:30 AM in front of the Royal Canadian Legion. We also discussed the Weyburn United Way Multicultural Day and Trails Day. Trails Day this year will be held in conjunction with United Way Multicultural Day on Sunday, June 24th, in River Park from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The day will kick off with a walkathon taking place on the Teteagua Trails, followed by multicultural celebration of food, crafts, entertainment, and demonstrations from different exhibitors. Registration is now open for those interested in participating. And on other discussion, we discussed dandelion spraying. It was noted that spraying was done in the fall of 2016 and will be done again in the coming months. And also discussion on tent caterpillars. The Parks Department will continue to monitor for tent caterpillars, and if they become a problem again this year, they will be sprayed with soap solution. Meeting was adjourned, and our next meeting is Monday, June 12th.
With that note, I would advise and/or request from all citizens, if you have the problem with tent caterpillars and you're seeing them, such as in the parking lot behind the Royal Tel, that you're seeing loads of tent caterpillars already, please advise, call the City Hall, and the message will be passed out to Parks that they're around, what area they're in. And if you have also issues about dandelion control, please contact us, as well as any of the other issues, as the potholes and such, please report to City Hall and give us this message so that we can keep up and all of our city workers can work towards making the city a more beautiful city. Counselor Mickle, can you give us briefly the airport report?
Your worship, the airport board met on Friday, May 12th, 8:00 AM. And here's some of the business from that meeting. SMS safety, there was no incidents to report, which is very good. There was one suggestion submitted that the airport lounge provide a logbook for all visitors, and there is now one available in the Tom Kerr Lounge. Unclaimed bank balance, Weyburn Flying Club, nothing yet, but we're still keeping our fingers crossed, and I think we'll have some money soon. Under maintenance items, I won't go into detail, they're all in the 2017 budget, and they'll be done this year. A big announcement here, though, your worship, airport gate press release. The next airport board meeting, which will be held at the airport on June 9th, that's Friday, 8:00 AM in the morning, at this time, the press will be invited to attend the official unveiling of the new airport security gate. There's also an inquiry to lease at the airport, which is very encouraging. An individual has submitted a proposal to the airport board for their consideration to lease land for the construction of a new hangar. The individual intends to use the hangar for commercial purposes and is an owner of an aircraft. Managers report, everything is good, your worship. When you have a managers report at this time of year, it's very nice to have. In the wintertime, it gets a little dicey, but everything is good. On the RM report, Ron Fowler is an RM member that attends the library airport board, and he advises that there's been a, we received a complaint of a damage to property adjacent to the airport resulting from snow removal, and this matter is going to be looked at at our next meeting in June. Our next meeting, and I just said that, your worship, and I'll repeat, is Friday, June 9th, at 8:00 AM at the airport.
Any questions, gentlemen? With that, we'll move forward to the Economic Development Committee report. Counselor Richards.
Thanks, your worship. Weyburn Economic Development met most recently on Wednesday, May 17th. Some of the topics discussed, as you know, the ECDEB group meets with new and existing businesses regularly, primarily our manager, Twyla Walkedin, does that. Currently in conversations with a couple of potential new retailers, as well as some industrial companies seeking to move into or expand within Weyburn. Manager Walkedin is taking part in conversations with the Central North American Trade Corridor Association. This is a group whose goal is to develop a trade route from the US up into Canada for better flow of goods and services both directions, well into the future. This board is also the administrator of the Weyburn Regional District Planning Commission. Recently, that commission met with Dave Merritt, the Honorable Dave Merritt, Minister of Highways, and we discussed further sort of information that we had about the twinning of Highway 39. The group has also engaged in a professional firm to complete an investor's guide for Weyburn. So this will be something that our manager can use to help attract new jobs, new investment to our community. This is the work underway, but we're not quite done yet. So when it's done, we'll bring a copy up for council. And also, we'll be hosting a booth at the Saskatchewan Oil and Gas Show here in Weyburn June 7th and 8th. And also, we'll be traveling out to the Global Petroleum Show in Calgary, June 13th, 14th, and 15th. The goal there, to attract new investment and jobs into our community. Also, Weyburn Economic Development, as you know, is responsible for the promotion of Weyburn as a tourism destination. So some of the work being done there, the new Weyburn City Guide is finished and available all over town now, and we would encourage somebody, if you haven't got that, pick it up, stop by City Hall, there's copies here, or lots of attractions in town. Manager Walkedin is working closely with a pretty cool event coming to Weyburn this Saturday. It's a women on the go. So what this is, is a busload of ladies from the Regina area, upwards of about 50 of them, be coming into Weyburn for one day to do some shopping and experience all that Weyburn has to offer. So we would encourage citizens when you're out, if you see a group of strangers, be cordial and say hello, and of course, our retailers will be taking advantage of that. And finally, just a one note, we'd like to remind everyone that Weyburn is a pretty cool place to be. So we need you over the summer to be a great ambassador for our city. So if you're looking for things to do, or you want to tell people about things to do, we would encourage you to follow Weyburn Tourism on Facebook. You certainly visit their website at waybentourism.com, and just be in communication with all the cool stuff going on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Well delivered. Police Commission report.
Thank you, your worship. A regular meeting of the Weyburn Police Commission was held at 4 o'clock on Monday, May 15th. First on the agenda were reports. Chief Pritchard presented the mayor's report for April 2017. In April, crimes against persons decreased by one as compared to April 2016. Crimes against property increased by one. Alarm calls decreased by 14 calls, and total calls for service increased by 62. Counselor Van Betje inquired what AGRA stands for in the report, and the chief advised that this is an acronym for alcohol and gaming relations. Mayor Roy inquired if there has been any effect locally on the worldwide virus that has hit many corporations, and the chief advised that he has not heard anything locally, but advised that there is no true measure of cyber crimes, as people don't report and just deal with it on their own. Accounts payable report for 2017 was presented, and Counselor Van Betje inquired what training was intended in Regina, attended in Regina, and the chief advised that it was a free course. We're included in at the city of Regina on investigation surveillance training, and we don't pay anything for the course, just hotel, food, et cetera. During the month of April, bylaw enforcement officer received numerous complaints resulting in six new investigations with maintenance orders. Three maintenance orders were issued in March, have not been complied with, and as a result, the process will be to have the city clean the yards. The Weyburn Humane Society report for April 2017 was presented. Overtime report, Chief Pritchard presented 2015-2016 overtime report. Chief Pritchard gave a summary of pay periods 1 to 9 for the years 2015, 16, and 17. In 2017, overtime double, overtime hours are at 141 hours compared to 128 in 2016, and 209 hours in 2016. Bank time is at 44 hours compared to 79 hours in 2016, and 46 in 15. Street time is at 54 hours compared to 40 hours in 16, 202 hours in 2015, and overtime is 55 and a half hours as compared to 125 in 16, and 165 in 15. This is, there has been no decrease in the last number of years, and the chief will continue to work on this, and the report will be given quarterly from now on. CAPG nomination, Mayor Roy indicated that if no other police board member is interested in putting their name forward to be nominated to the CAPG, which is the Canadian Association of Police Governance, then he would ask the board nominate him. The nomination deadline is June 1st, 2017. Moved by Counselor Van Betje and seconded by Rob Stephenson, that the Weyburn Police Board of Commissions nominate Mayor Marcel Roy for a position on the Canadian Association of Police Governance Board of Directors. Rob advised he attended CAPG meetings over the weekend and will provide an update and information at the next Police Commission meeting. Meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions on any of these reports I've received? So please note them received and filed. Consent agenda, accounts receivable report for April.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the accounts receivable collection report for April 2017 on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions? Accounts payable with pecuniary interest?
I will step up for a moment, your worship.
Okay. Jolene?
Counselor Chessel has stepped away as there is an invoice for New Age Electronics. That, obviously, he has an interest in that business, so.
Okay. Mr. Wheeler?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchase date at April 20th, 2017, in the amount of $456.04, with a pecuniary interest has been disclosed, be passed for payment.
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Accounts payable?
Your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the purchases is in the amount of $388,088.39 from May 5th to May 18th, 2017, be passed for payment.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Discussion? All in favor? Carried. We now move forward to page two of our meeting. Commend some street names, if you would, please, Jolene.
Your worship, there are some portions of streets, streets which were named on the original legal plans of survey submitted and registered with ISC that are not consistent with the city of Weyburn's assigned civic addresses. These portions of streets were overlooked when new residential developments occurred and new legal plans of survey were submitted to ISC for registration. These required changes will not affect any property owners as their civic addresses are already assigned based on amended street names. So these changes are just required so that legal land titles are consistent and show the same legal street name as we currently are using. So there'll be no changes to anybody's legal addresses. We just need to make our changes here to make sure everything's jiving. So there are four changes. Firstly, the change, to change the name of the portion of Douglas Road created by Plan 86R48252, lying east of a line from the southwest corner of Lot 1, Block 8. Plan 86R48252 to the northwest corner of Lot 1, Block 17. Plan 101931511 to Barbara Crescent. Both properties within this boundary have civic addresses of Barbara Crescent. The second change is to change the name of Clark Avenue as created by Plan 87R15625 to Barbara Crescent. All affected property owners within this property have a civic address currently on Barbara Crescent. Thirdly, the change, to change the name to Johnson Drive is created by Plan 89R09592 to Johnson Drive. On the original plan of survey, the street name was just spelled incorrectly. All civics assigned use Johnson Drive already, so there'll be no changes for the owners again. And fourthly, to change the name of Johnson Drive is created by Plan 102059995 to Johnson Drive. Again, it was a spelling error made. So those are the four changes that we need to make.
Your worship, I would like to make a motion that the following legal street names be amended and submitted to ISC to be consistent with ISC Information Services Corporation records. Firstly, a portion of Douglas Road created by Plan 86R48252, lying east of the line from southwest corner of Lot 1, Block 8. Plan 86R48252 to the northwest corner of Lot 1, Block 17. Plan 101931511 to Barbara Crescent, assigned to Barbara Crescent. Change the name of Clark Avenue as created by Plan 87R15625 to Barbara Crescent. Change the name of Johnson Drive as created by Plan 86R09592 to Johnston Drive. Change the name of Johnson Drive as created by Plan 102059995 to Johnston Drive.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. The tandem gravel truck tender?
Your worship, the tender called for the supply of one tandem axle gravel truck demonstrator or lightly used units would also be considered. This unit will be utilized for general public works and parks operations and will replace our unit number 46, which is currently a 1995 Kenworth tandem truck. The 2017 fleet services budget contained $160,000 for this purchase, and this budget was pre-established during pre-budget consultation with various suppliers. The tender was advertised on the SAS Tenders website, as well as on the city page of the local newspaper, and total 11 bids were received from seven firms. Of the 11 bids received, they ranged from $135,500 to $164,657,000. In performing the due diligence necessary to make this purchase, recommendation we considered, performance, configuration, operator visibility, safety, comfort, and supplier service support, and parts availability. Where practical, actual, or similar units were physically inspected and tested, test operated. Supplier references were called and questioned regarding overall satisfaction with equipment and service, and our own history with equipment and service were considered. The city of Weyburn currently has three other Freightliner truck chassis in our fleet, and we have been satisfied with their performance to date. Commercial Truck Regina's location is a full-service facility. The tender indicates a 60-day delivery date from the time of purchase, and administration recommends the tender be awarded to Commercial Truck Equipment Company of Regina for the supply of a 2018 Freightliner M2106 truck and gravel box for the total purchase price of $143,630,000.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the tender from Commercial Truck Equipment Company of Regina for the supply of a 2018 Freightliner M2106 truck and gravel box for the total purchase price of $143,630 be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
This is, how much under budget? Approximately 16, 17?
The budget was $160,000, and this came in at $143,630.
Taxes paid in delivery?
Total purchase price, so yeah, taxes were included in that, yeah.
Well done. All in favor? Carried unanimously. We have the, there's no introduction of bylaws at this point in time, and there's no old business at this point in time. So we move on to new business. We have a development permit for a mobile ice cream cart. The good old Dicky D, if you remember back in those days, they're, Dick, that we, that we have, is coming back here, so what do we have?
Okay, a request has been submitted by Dan Cognet, owner of Goodfellas Ice Cream Incorporated, who proposes to operate two mobile ice cream carts throughout the city of Weyburn. of Weyburn during the months listed above, so from June 1st through to October 15th. The proposal as attached would be to roam city streets and public spaces on a daily basis from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, selling ice cream treats to the public. The carts are roughly three feet wide and four feet long with a bicycle on the end. The proponent would operate the bicycle and cart on the shoulder of the road and would not take up any lanes of traffic. They are also aware that they shall abide by all traffic safety regulations and city bylaw regulations. The proponent is also aware that they are required to obtain permission from nonprofit associations prior to going into places like Jubilee Park if they're, they already have an event going on in that park. We have consulted with the other city facilities and have no concerns regarding this, so in this, excuse me, in this case, the request to operate two mobile ice cream carts seasonally, staff recommends option two, which the business may operate on city property only during events where the organization in charge has submitted a letter of consent to the City of Weyburn, allowing Goodfellas Ice Cream Incorporated permission to operate in the vicinity of their event. Any desired scheduled events must be provided two weeks before the start of the season. Any conditions set by the organization in charge of a given event must be complied with, such as a condition that a percentage of the mobile concession's earnings be donated back to the organization in charge of the event. Approval from private property owner shall be obtained and submitted to the city prior to operation on private property. Approval from a public health inspector is submitted, demonstrating that the mobile concession meets the requirements of the public eating establishment standards. Approval from the fire department shall be submitted and certificate displayed on this cart at all times. The mobile ice cream cart shall not be parked or driven so as to obstruct pedestrian or vehicular circulation. The mobile ice cream cart shall not obstruct any marked fire lanes, fire hydrants, or no parking areas, access to alleyways or driveways, and shall adhere to the traffic bylaw. The mobile ice cream cart shall not create any disturbance or nuisance in terms of noise or light that may be a distraction for motorists and/or pedestrians. Upon completion of the day's operations, the mobile ice cream cart shall be removed from city streets. All structures associated, material, and signage must be removed. Any area devoted to required landscaping at the site may not be occupied by the mobile ice cream carts, and a City of Weyburn business license must be obtained for each cart prior to operation.
In the hearing those conditions, your worship, I would like to make the motion that the development permit of Dan Cognit to operate two mobile ice cream carts in the city be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Is this called Dicky D. or not?
No. No, I think it's called Goodfellas.
Okay, the question I raise is, we have so many rules and regulations, is this gonna put a stopper with this business to even do this, or is he aware of what's going on?
I believe all the regulations have been discussed with him when he made the proposal. The regulations, they seem like there's a lot of them, but there really isn't. It's just that if they're going to do it on property, they have to make sure that there isn't another event going on, that they've already set up this type of food or something like that. So they just have to be cautious of the other people already in these, like, say Jubilee Park, places like that, right? So they have to do a little bit of work, but absolutely, they can still roam free, and as long as they're not causing a nuisance, or, you know, not following traffic bylaws, there shouldn't be an issue whatsoever.
I guess the question I had, Jolene, this was discussed with the individual already? Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. The ice cream carts are back in town. And every person, every parent will cringe when they hear the bells ringing, so. Development permit, we have a shipping container storage that has been requested, Jolene?
We have a proposal for a placement of a shipping container to be used for storage of retail stock by Kevin Quist of Home Hardware at 105 Third Street Southeast, legally described as Lot 51, Block 1, Plan 101417576. With this approval, a shipping container will be placed on the lot west of Home Hardware, also owned by Harm, or also owned by Home Hardware. Zoning of this site is Riverfront Market, which permits long use of a shipping container as a discretionary use. The proponent is requesting to utilize the shipping container as storage of retail overstock. All minimum setbacks proposed are in compliance with the zoning bylaw. Neighborhood notices were distributed to all property owners within a 75-meter radius of the property, with no issues or concerns received. As the proposal meets all setback requirements and conforms to the standards and requirements for shipping cargo containers, staff recommends option number two. Products stored must be directly related to the primary commercial use. Shipping containers are not to be leased or used by any outside party other than the property owner. Shipping containers are prohibited for the storage of junk, trash, or other forms of refuse, hazardous substances, or perishable items. Shipping containers shall be kept locked to prevent unauthorized access. Shipping containers shall be placed on hard-packed level surface, and any bottom drainage holes shall be secured against the environment and/or rodents. Shipping containers are prohibited from being plumbed or electrified. Shipping containers shall be painted and maintained to be aesthetically pleasing. If any outdoor storage on Site Section 5.4 of the zoning bylaw shall be complied with, storage shall be completely screened by a solid wall or fence of at least 1.83 meters high, and the storage area shall be maintained as to reduce the adverse visual effects of the storage and to enhance public health and safety by preventing the contamination of the urban environment. Any areas not occupied by buildings, parking, loading, or storage shall be landscaped in accordance with Subsection 1, or 15.1.2 of the zoning bylaw. All property, including land, building, structures, and outdoor storage shall be maintained with minimum standards as set out by the City of Weyburn Property Maintenance Bylaw 2004-3021.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the development permit application of Home Hardware at 105 Third Street Southeast to place a shipping container for the storage on the property be approved with the conditions presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Thank you, worship. I did go down to see Kevin this afternoon because I wanted to see what this was gonna look like in that spot. First of all, he is gonna take out an old dilapidated storage shed that's done, and so that's the first thing that's improvement. The only question I had, I think it can fit there, and he said he's gonna paint it up. I had a question about the fencing, okay, a solid wall or a fence being put around. Was that discussed with him, Jolene? Is that a mandatory thing that he fenced around it?
Yeah, he would know, sorry, yeah, he would know all the regulations were went through with him when he applied for the development permit.
Yes, it's about the only thing I hadn't covered with him, so just clarification of that, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Last one, home occupation in a skate sharpening business, although it's still early in the middle of summer.
An application has been received from Lanny Stinson to operate a small retail and skate sharpening business from his residence within his attached garage at 513 Scott Street, legally described as Lot 9, Block 151, Plan ES2921, located in an R1 zone in the Weyburn Heights subdivision. The business will operate during the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM from Monday through Sunday during the hockey season, with minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow. This would be considered a controversial use, as this occupation involves the production of or sale of items on-site, and there will be clients directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, parking in the driveway will be available to clients purchasing the hockey tape, laces, or getting their skates sharpened. Home-based occupations are permitted in the R1 zone but are generally deemed controversial, requiring public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on May 8th, 2017, to all neighbors within 75 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receive the notice, residents receiving the notice were given until Tuesday, May 16th, to voice concern. No concerns or objections were received. The use is identified as fully contained within the attached garage and would be considered a controversial occupation under Section 6.3.3, Subsection 11 of the zoning bylaw, as a number of clients will be directed to the home. Overall, the home occupation is compliant with all other regulations. As home occupations are a permitted use in any residential dwelling, staff is recommending approval with conditions of option one. Option one, no persons other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer, and no advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on-site must be made 0.092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Material deliveries and product pickups should, should they have to occur, will be done between the hours of 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM on weekdays, and will be provided off-street parking in the driveway of the residence. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance, and a City of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home occupation.
Hearing that, your worship, I'm pleased to make a motion that the home occupancy application from Lanny Stinson to operate a small retail skate sharpening business from the residence of 513 Scott Street be approved with conditions presented.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Discussion? What I would like to bring up is the idea of that no media advertisement. Nowadays, I would feel that we should be allowing Facebook advertisement, because that's more their personal page to discuss. There should be exemption into there, because there's so many people who use and talk about that, and that's a way, again, we're here to promote the small business and help them go. Facebook is one of those things that we allow. Do you, any other discussion?
I believe that would have to be a change to the zoning bylaw in order to make that change.
We have to change that? There would be no way of making a exemption on this one?
Not on this one, no, you'd have to change the bylaw first.
You have to change the bylaw, and that is probably something we should be looking at, to allow that type of thing. And I believe that the intent on when the media was, was in the days of flyers and such going out onto there, so. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. With that, we have our inquiries and announcements. One of the things that, just to make note that, and to say it again, simply because it was, we raised a flag here this afternoon on Pride Week, and just want to repeat again the statement that I made on that. There was my privilege as mayor, not only to support, but also include all citizens in our community. Pride Week is a great way to show how far we have come in our fight for equality for all individuals. Huge steps have been taken in the right direction, but I would like to remind people, the battle is far from over. One of the most noble speakers of equality was Martin Luther King. He stated, "The time is always right to do what is right." And my friends, that's what the time was yesterday, this time is tomorrow, and it is without a doubt now. So let's stand in our beliefs, stick together, up for your friends and loved ones, and always treat each other with respect and common decency. And with that, I proclaim that the week of May 23rd to the 28th be Pride Week here in Weyburn, and raise the flag, Pride Week in Weyburn. That's what happened here this day in Weyburn. With that, I would also like to make note that council meeting, due to a lot of obligations on myself and other council members, and usually there's, and there's maintenance to be done in the council chambers, at time, we have moved forward, forward from July 1 to a June council meeting. So the council meeting be notified, the council meeting for June 12th, 2017, will be canceled, and the next meeting will be June 26th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Without, is there any questions from the press, from the visitors? If there isn't, I move this meeting adjourned.